I call this meeting of the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code 551. The time is 5:59 PM. If you will, Mr. Kidd is going to lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
You know, admittedly, I'm not always that good at memorizing scripture, but this week, I sent one to my daughter. My daughter's a first grade teacher up in Plano, team leader. And my son's taking finals or first quarter in law school. I sent him this verse of encouragement, and it made me, you know, I've been up here for eight years, about to get off, and I've just been blown away by all the good that you guys do on a daily basis. And I've just been blown away from that. So I thought this verse would offer some encouragement before I pray. It's out of Galatians 6:9. "Let us not become weary in doing good, for at the proper time we will reap a harvest if we do not give up." I'm going to say that one more time, because I think in this time, it's, you know, with everything that's going on, and I know everybody's tired, but you guys are doing such great things. And so, again, let us not become weary in doing good, for at the proper time, we will reap a harvest if we do not give up. So if you would, if you're inclined, just please bow your heads. I'm going to lead you some prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, just, Lord, thank you for loving us. Thank you for your grace. Thank you for your many blessings upon this district. Dear Heavenly Father, I just want to offer a special thanks tonight, Lord, to our superintendent and the leadership that he has provided, Lord, for our general counsel, everything that she does for us, Lord, everybody in this room, the administrators, the leaders, the officers, in the classroom, our educators, in the cafeteria, in the maintenance, and the bus drivers. Lord, I just offer a request that you just protect their families, bless them, Lord, and be with them, and continue to be there right along their path and their journey through this 2020. Dear Lord, I thank you for our children. I would ask, Lord, your continued protection over each and every one of them, Lord, and everybody in our community, in our district, Lord, and just ask for protection. Dear Lord, thank you for those up here who serve and just be with us tonight. Let us keep your will in our hearts and in our thoughts as we conduct school board business, and just let us have a productive night. And just, again, Lord, just thank you for your many blessings upon this district, in your heavenly name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
If you'll join me with the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Texas flag.
On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one unit indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd, for those words of encouragement, very much so needed. Thank you, sir. All right, item two, awards and recognition. Item 2A, special district recognition, Texas PTA grant presentation. Dr. Knoll?
All right, we'll invite Mr. Chris McCord, our executive director of operations, up.
President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll, it is my pleasure to be here tonight. I am here to introduce Susie Kennon. She is president of the Texas Parent Teachers Association. The Texas PTA is one of the many valued organizations we work with to enhance the school experiences of our children, including their transportation to and from school. The Texas PTA has generously donated money for us to further our ongoing efforts to modernize our bus fleet for kids, as we add additional clean-running buses, vehicles with air conditioning, and grow our number of buses with seat belts. Susie Kennon serves as president of the Texas PTA, the largest child advocacy association in the state, and the second-largest state PTA in the nation with over 523,000 members. During her tenure on the Texas PTA Board of Directors, Susie has testified at the state Capitol on matters related to public education and public health. She lives in Wiley with her husband Brad and three daughters. Susie has dedicated 20 years and counting to PTA. I present to you President Susie Kennon.
Thank you for welcoming me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for welcoming me this evening to your Board of Trustees meeting. I'm honored to be here representing Texas PTA and our 500,000-plus members statewide, who give countless hours to students and schools in Texas each year. Conroe ISD has one PTA in your school district. Thanks to Bonnie Wilkerson Elementary PTA, the campus being a PTA made Conroe eligible for this school board grant. I'm thrilled Principal Melinda Stewart and volunteer leader Candace Armstrong are present this evening. Thank you, ladies. In PTA, we have a motto, "Every child, one voice." I'm hopeful I will have the opportunity to talk to your principal soon about the PTA's, shameless plug by the way, about the PTA difference, and how we can partner with Conroe ISD to make every child's potential a reality. We would be thrilled to grow the number of PTAs in Conroe, and as you can see, school bus grants are just one example how PTA is different from other parent groups. For PTA, the whole child is a priority. From education to health and wellness, we are vocal for our kids. Since 2007, Texas PTA has been fighting to protect students from harmful toxins emitted by school buses. Children riding school buses are exposed to high concentrations of fine particles and other toxic substances. The danger presents for students seated inside, boarding, and exiting the buses. That's the reason Texas PTA has supported and testified on behalf of legislation to reduce school bus idling. Exposure to diesel dust from school buses can aggravate respiratory problems, asthma, and allergies, irritate the eyes, nose, throat, and lungs, cause coughs, headaches, lightheadedness, and nausea. In 2008, we partnered with the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality to use supplemental environmental project dollars to fund the Clean School Bus Grant. This grant is awarded to PTA districts for the purchase of newer, cleaner bus models to replace diesel school buses. Since the beginning, Texas PTA has paid out over $2 million in grant money. We were happy to present Conroe ISD with a check for $2,279,200 to purchase three new buses awarded by Texas PTA in partnership with the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. We applaud Conroe ISD for taking steps to ensure safe conditions for your students. If there's anything PTA knows best, it's collaboration. We work as part of a team, living out the age-old proverb, "There is strength in numbers." Texas PTA is committed to working with the state, so we may continue to offer the Clean School Bus Grant and help our PTA districts address the need for cleaner school bus emissions. A healthy child is a happy child, and a happy child is successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Skeeter wants his picture taken.
Mrs. Stewart, would you like to join them as well?
I mean, 280,000, that's pretty darn good.
It is. Three bus words.
Appreciate that.
Give it to Darren, you can put it in there.
Like Darren, Darren.
Happy Gilmore.
See your endorsement on that.
Thank you, Carrie, for getting that joke. I appreciate it.
Thank you. That's a lot of wrapping paper y'all, so. All right, let's get at it. I appreciate you. Item 2B, special recognition, dyslexia awareness month.
All right, thank you. We'll turn it over to trustee Moore.
Thank you, thank you. I have a proclamation that I've authored that I would like read and entered into the record tonight, but before I do that, there's some people in the room I'd really like to recognize, because they're really at the heart and soul of what brought this about. First, Dr. Upshaw and Tracy Landis and Dr. Henry. These ladies work at the district level with our students, with all student populations, but specifically tonight, we're celebrating their work with dyslexic students. And we'd like to celebrate the work that you lead all throughout the district in addressing that student population. So. And also, Mrs. Fairley, Mrs. May, and Ms. Evans, I don't know if she's here, and all the parents from Better Education for Dyslexia, I wanted to thank all of you for keeping this in front of me. I confess and repent of my sin that dyslexia, before you all entered my life, was not something I gave a whole lot of thought about, other than some conversations with my wife, who's an instructional coach, because I had never dealt with it directly and personally. So thank you to all of you for keeping this in front of us and for helping give me feedback on this proclamation. I really appreciate the work that you and your organizations do. So I'd like to read this proclamation, and this goes out to all of you. Whereas the Texas Education Agency and the American Institutes of Research identify dyslexia as, quote, "the most commonly diagnosed learning disability," end quote, affecting the education of our children, and whereas students experiencing dyslexia may also struggle with related disorders, such as dysgraphia, dyscalculia, developmental auditory and perceptions, dysphasia, specific developmental dyslexia, developmental dysgraphia, and developmental spelling disability, and whereas the most recent data available from the Texas Education Agency indicates that only 3.5% to 4% of Texas students are identified as dyslexic, and whereas peer-reviewed research indicates that up to 20% of the student population may suffer from the difficulties associated with dyslexia, and whereas the difficulties associated with dyslexia and its related disorders require an enormous amount of time and energy on the part of the student, parents, guardians, teachers, paraprofessionals, and specialists to address the learning needs of the student, and whereas the Conroe Independent School District is committed to addressing the educational needs of every student it serves, and proudly makes the statement, "All means all," and whereas the Conroe Independent School District has committed to addressing the specific needs of those students struggling with dyslexia and its related disorders by training teachers, employing dedicated dyslexia specialists, interventionists, instructional coaches, and other highly-trained personnel, and providing resources to parents to address the educational needs of those students struggling with the difficulties of dyslexia and its related disorders, and whereas October has been declared as Dyslexia Awareness Month, now, therefore, we, the Board of Trustees of the Conroe Independent School District, do hereby honor and observe October as Dyslexia Awareness Month, and do hereby honor and pledge our support to the students, parents, educators, tutors, researchers, and specialists seeking to provide the highest quality of education to those students struggling with the difficulties of dyslexia and its related disorders. All means all. And after our meeting, this will be signed by President Williams and placed into the official record of our minutes tonight, and a copy will be proudly displayed here in the district office. So all of you who helped make this possible, I say thank you very much.
Thank you. Would everyone we mentioned, Mr. Moore mentioned, please stand so we can.
Wave your hand. You can't see you behind those masks.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Outstanding. All right, item 2C, special recognition, Barbara Robertson, RN, 2020 TSNO Administrator of the Year Award.
All right, we'll ask Dr. Hines to come up to introduce this item.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. Tonight, the Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees gives special recognition to Nurse Barbara Robertson for her selection as the 2020 Texas School Nurses Organization School Nurse Administrator of the Year. Conroe ISD Coordinator of Health Services Barbara Robertson was announced as the 2020 TSNO School Nurse Administrator of the Year on September 30, 2020. The award recognizes the contribution of Texas school nurse administrators by honoring one school nurse administrator who demonstrates excellence in school nursing practice and leadership in school health. Nurse Robertson is certainly deserving of this honor and recognition for her outstanding leadership of our entire health services team. Barbara has served in the role of coordinator of health services for the past six years, and prior to her role as coordinator, she served as nurse at Kaney Creek High School for 10 years. Our school nurses have a vital role in supporting the health and well-being of our students, and they do an amazing job each and every day. Barbara's leadership and guidance are a big part of this success. She, along with her team, have been integral to the district's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Her amazing work ethic and commitment to the health and well-being of our students and staff is first and foremost in everything that she does in the work of health services. In addition to being a tremendous resource and support to our nurses who deal with real issues in their clinics every day, Nurse Robertson is a noted leader among her peers. She has quickly become that person that her peers go to to find out how we are responding to certain challenges. Barbara was recently profiled in the U.S. News and World Report to showcase the work of school nurses. And I've worked through numerous challenges over the past several years, and to date, we have yet to experience anything close to this level in the area of public health, which has resulted in unprecedented amounts of questions, growth, guidance, and communication being directed to health services. And I'm sure that there are some that might shrink from the onslaught of this activity that has mushroomed since last March, but not Barbara. She has provided a steady voice and confidence that we can and we will move forward. I'm thankful to work alongside of her. She adds value to our organization, and tonight we recognize Barbara Robertson.
Thank you. I didn't prepare anything. Dr. Knoll, President Williams, and the members of the board, I am fortunate to work in a district that values the contribution of a school nurse to the student's success and education, and am blessed to be able to lead this team through this issue to whatever the other side of COVID is going to be. Our district has always supported school health, so it has not been a surprise that we now have what we need to be able to provide for our students. But I just want to say thank you on behalf of all of our nurses and our clinic assistants that work every day to keep everyone safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, where you at, man? Come on up.
I'm her driver.
He lucky to be so.
Mr. Chavez, this is Barbara's supervisor and director of community outreach.
Wonderful.
Appreciate you, young blood. Now, you guys are typically unsung, so this is such a treat for us to get to recognize some of our unsung heroes throughout the district. So thank you. Once again, I reiterate the words of Mr. Husbands. All right, item three, citizen participation.
Yes.
Does anyone want to address the board?
We do have citizens signed up to speak.
Okay, outstanding. The next item on the agenda is public comment from those who've registered to address the board in accordance to Board Policy BED. Everyone is reminded that this portion of the meeting is not the appropriate forum for bringing complaints for which resolution is sought. Before complaints can be submitted to the Board of Trustees as an agenda item, they must be addressed by following the appropriate policies and administrative procedures. Also, please keep in mind that the board has an obligation to protect the confidentiality of information that could personally identify a student. The board cannot permit comments that include students' names or any information that might identify a specific student. The prohibition does not apply if the student speaking is the student's parent or guardian, or is over the age of 18 and speaking about him or herself. If anyone is mentioned that is on tonight's posted agenda, if an issue is mentioned that is on tonight's posted agenda, the board will defer its discussion of the issue until the item is reached on the agenda. For any subject that is not on the board's posted agenda, the board cannot deliberate or make a decision, but it can furnish specific factual information or cite existing policy in response to inquiries. Each person is limited to no more than five minutes for their presentation. This will allow the board to hear from citizens as well as ensure that the board meeting runs efficiently, as there are many important items on the board's agenda that must be considered. Everyone in attendance is reminded to treat all speakers with respect, regardless of whether you agree or disagree with the speaker's message. Any person who does not conduct himself or herself accordingly will be asked to leave or will be escorted from the room. Ms. Coughlin, please call your person.
Nicole May.
Good evening, members of the board, President Williams, Dr. Knoll. First, I want to introduce you to my son. This is Devin May. He's a fourth grader at Bush, and he's also in the dyslexia program, so.
Hi, Devin.
Yeah, we just wanted to introduce him. Okay.
All right, man.
That was his big moment. He thought you guys were all judges, by the way.
Far from it.
Only one of us got a gavel.
That is true, that is true. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for recognizing Dyslexia Awareness Month and for saying dyslexia. Thank you to Tracy Landis, our incredible dyslexia specialist, Dr. Henry. I have a long relationship with her as well. She was in meetings about Devin when he was little bitty, so it's really a treat that they actually get to meet Devin tonight. I also want to thank you to all the dyslexia teachers in the district. If any of you are listening, I want you guys to know that we parents think of you as angels on earth, that your work changes lives. My goal tonight is to continue keeping dyslexic students in our district to focus and to continue addressing the need for more for our population. The questions I ponder often are, do the decision-makers in our district see the need for more for our population, and do you see the potential of our population and society? Let's begin with the first question. Do you see the need for more for struggling readers in our district? I would like to begin by referencing STAR scores in 2018, 2019. I found the data in an article on page 36 of the Woodlands Area Magazine by the Woodlands Chamber of Commerce from 2019, 2020. The data drills down the scores by campus in our district. Focusing solely on reading and writing scores by campus in our district, I noticed the following information. In third grade, 12 of the 33 campuses had below state average reading scores. That's 36% of elementary campuses. You will find our population identified and not identified in these numbers. In fourth grade, six of the 33 elementary campuses had below state average reading scores. You will find our population identified and not identified in these numbers. In fourth grade, writing, seven of the 33 campuses had below state average writing scores. If decoding words is difficult, then encoding words is even more labor-intensive. You will find our population in here, too. In fifth grade, four of the 10 intermediate campuses had below state average reading scores. That's 40%. The gap is widening. Our population identified and not identified is in these numbers. In seventh grade, two of the seven junior high campuses were below state average in reading and writing. That's 28%. In eighth grade, three of the seven junior high campuses had below state average reading scores. That's 42% of our junior high campuses not hitting the state average. In the high school campuses, three of the seven campuses stick out to me, Kaney Creek, Conroe High, and Hock. In Kaney Creek, 45% of the students taking English 1* did not score above state average, and 38% of the students taking English 2* did not score above state average. In Conroe High, the second-largest high school in our district, the scores for English 1 and 2* desperately closed to state average, leaving a very large number of students not hitting the state average. Lastly, Hock. While a very small school, these students are near and dear to my heart. I, too, finished high school barely. At a campus like this, as an unidentified dyslexic with issues at home, the odds were out of my favor. I assume many of these students have difficult odds, too. Of the 134 students have to not hit the minimum English level scores. Next, in the question of, do you see the need for more for our population, I would like to ask a few questions and offer some insight. Number one, why did we as a district adopt a brand-new dyslexia program last year? Was it because after tracking the students that went through the previous program, we found that those students were still not thriving? My insight is it was not the previous program that failed these students, rather it was the lack of commitment to execute the program to the level required to gain success. Fidelity is the key issue here. Please refer to the minimum amount of time in a maxed-out small group that I discussed numerous times last year. Number two, we know that 20% of students is dyslexic. At the beginning of 2019, we had 3,125 students identified in a total district population of 64,000, way off the mark. Sure, some do not need the entire dyslexia program, but we are currently a one-trick pony, one dyslexia program for all. RTI and SPED teachers appear to have little to no dyslexia training. Again, fidelity for our struggling readers is the issue. Number three, at some point, the families that pay for expensive dyslexia tutoring, because district dyslexia services are lacking, must stand up and say, "No more." We must do this for our fellow families with dyslexic students that do not have the extra resources to pay for expensive tutoring. $40 to $60 an hour, three to four times a week, for three and a half years, is not accessible for most families. The color of this system is green. The gap between the have and have-nots is wide. Dyslexia appears to only be a gift if your family has money. Next question, do you see the potential of our population? Albert Einstein, Thomas Edison, Leonardo da Vinci, Steven Spielberg, Pablo Picasso, Winston Churchill, Steve Jobs, these are just a few famous people that are all made by dyslexia.
Ms. May.
Oh, I have one more paragraph. Tiny?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate your grace on that. But only when the public school system does not fail them. The other side of the coin is stark. Our prisons are filled with dyslexic men and women. The pressure to get this right for struggling readers is of the utmost importance. You, not me, but all of you, must first and foremost recognize the problem, which is that CISD needs to do more for our struggling readers. If I have done nothing else tonight, I hope I have triggered this thought process for all of you on the board. We depend on the board to be our voice. And, Dr. Knoll, this is your district. These are your teams. If you deem this a priority and need for change, you have that power. Please, struggling readers are depending on all of you. Thank you for your time, and thank you for saying dyslexia.
Thank you, Ms. May.
Thank you.
Justin Vaughn?
Let's start plucking back here, give me a little bit of extra time. I'd like to pre-apologize for the speed that I'm going to speak. I know I've got four main points that I want to address, and I'm going to absolutely fly through them. But before I do that, I would like to start off by saying thank you, Mr. Moore, right, for the opening comments. Thank you to Dr. Henry, Ms. Landis, and all of the dyslexic teachers around, you know, that are working to support our children, and thank you very much for the opening words. I think that's a very, very fitting blessing, especially in this Dyslexia Awareness Month. So, here I go. Thank you all very much for giving me the time to get up and talk for a few minutes about dyslexia and about my personal experience with my son. I thought I'd start out by giving a few sentences on my background, who I am, where I come from, and it might give you a little insight on why I do what I do and why I'm so passionate about the topic of dyslexia and education in general. So first off, my name is Justin Vaughn. When I was younger, we moved a lot as a family from my dad's job. My mother was a teacher. She, in fact, she actually just retired after over 40 years in education. So I suppose having a teacher for a mother and moving around a lot helped me prepare for the life that I lead today. So I wound up marrying one, a teacher, that is, and we moved as a family all over the world. We've lived Africa, Brazil, Australia, Singapore, and up until about a few months ago, we lived in Indonesia. So I've got four kids, all born in different countries. I've always been very active in my children's schools. I've served on boards and trustee positions in multiple countries. But bottom- But bottom line, we're very, very happy to be here, very happy to be in Conroe I S D, very happy to be home around family, and most importantly, my kids love being in the schools that they're in.
Outstanding.
Now, what does that have to do with dyslexia? So, when my second son, James, sitting in the back there, when he was diagnosed with dyslexia, he was just starting the second grade. So, as a dad, I went through the, all the reins of emotions, right? But it wasn't until I started to get into the details and educate myself about how, to educate myself about dyslexia and come up with a plan that I really felt confident with the situation. I did it along with the resources and the teachers at the kid's school. So, we had recently moved to Jakarta, and the teachers there were from all over the world, and they were great, followed the American system, et cetera. Bottom line, I went from being very upset about the whole situation to the complete opposite end of the spectrum, confident in my understanding of the support, how James was going to learn, confidence in the teachers, right? It was great. And we spent the next year and a half seeing great improvement and confidence in James, right? And I attribute that to, to, to a few specific points that I want to share with you tonight. So, out of those two, first one, the intervention that, that we saw so much improvement on was a complete foundation for dyslexia. So, the term that I'm used to using is all of the building blocks. So, what I mean by that is the, the children learn how to understand a language. That's pronunciation, comprehension, fluency, and reading. What I see in our system here is reading intervention. So, reading alone does not translate to making a child a fluent or skilled reader. So, in our experience, right, the child went for an entire language arch block, so the child received all of the building blocks that I mentioned above in a one-and-a-half to two-hour, two-hour time period of the day, and then went back to class. As a comparison, what I see here is reading intervention only, right, for twenty or so minutes, and then the child is pulled, pulled from their class. They sometimes miss other subjects and group instruction, instruction in the classroom, and then the child's teacher is expected to catch them back up on what he or she missed, you know, during their intervention time. And that intervention time is geared towards reading only, right? That's, that's point one. Point two, the parents and the teachers, we work together, right? We're very, very clear. Both parties understood what needed to be done, and what needed to be done to develop our children into skilled readers, which included all of the building blocks that I, that I mentioned in my first point: pronunciation, communication, fluency, and reading. So, to be specifically clear, in our experience, and for the purpose of sharing, right, the biggest successes are seen when the parents and teachers are working together, and all of the building blocks are worked on to make up an entire language development. So, now, those were my first two points that I wanted to share. Now, I have two, two requests. So, on behalf of, of parents of dyslexic children, first point, number one, we want to know how best to support our children, right? We want to know how, sorry, we don't want to be parents that are not educated. So, let's come up with a way to do that, right? I personally, I have a wife, I have a mother, I have family friends, friends from Jakarta, Singapore, they all help me navigate this very often intimidating situation, and I still get confused. So, what about families that, that don't learn about dyslexia until their children are much older, right, or they don't have any of those support, support resources around them that I just mentioned? You know, the support groups are great, right, and there are great ways to bounce ideas off each other, but they lack the personal relationship with a specific teacher for that, for that child. So, as a parent, I really feel if this area was emphasized more and parents were taught or given resources or something to say, hey, look, these are all of the building blocks that your child needs, this is what the school is gonna do, this is what you can do to help fill in those blocks, I think we would see a lot less stressed parents and more flourishing kids. That's request number one. Request number two, we'd like to understand how the state uses funding, right? So, I fully understand the T E A since the early eighties, right, is mandated to the regions of Texas, how the dyslexia students should be supported, but there's a definite disconnect between the mandate and then the funding that's given to, to, to put those mandates in, into action. I know that, sorry. So, I have just one last, yeah, I'm hurrying, and I know it's, it's tough to deal with. But what I'd like to see is the funding that we have go towards putting, putting more emphasis on having things like COLTS, right, the Certified Academic Language Therapists, who can support in all the different building blocks as mentioned above. I really think it's too much to ask for, for the classroom teacher to fill in those, those, those building blocks that are not supported, you know, by the reading intervention. So, a lot of words, I'm not gonna sum up, because I think you know that. But, and again, I know I've gone over my time, I'm certainly sorry about that, but I really get passionate about this topic, you know, not only for my son, but for kids in general and parents that want to help. You know, I recognize that there was an addition of a fifth day as compared to last year, so I truly appreciate that. I think that's a great step, but I feel like we can do more. So, as representing parents in general, we don't want to sit back, but we want to find ways where we can help, and personally, I really want to be part of this. So, again, thank you very much, and I look forward to providing support in any way that I can.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can you hear me? Do I need to take this off?
We can hear you. You talking about the face or the mask? Well, we can hear you.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the Board, Dr. Knoll. My name is Stuart Schrader. I volunteer as the Vice Chairman for the George Strait District, Sam Houston Area Council Boy Scouts of America. The George Strait District serves scouting units in Conroe and Willis I S Ds. I have two reasons for being here tonight. First, I wanted to introduce you to Carla Martinez, the District Executive for the George Strait District. Carla's been serving the district for a little over a year, and she is a full-time scouting professional employed with the Sam Houston Area Council. The second reason I'm here is to provide you, the Board, with an update on the state of scouting in this most challenging year of 2020, and particularly as it pertains to Conroe I S D. I wanted to highlight a recent Eagle Scout service project, and I've just redacted his name to comply with your policy. The scout is a, currently a senior at Oak Ridge High School. His Eagle project consisted of planting oak trees on the campus of Oak Ridge High School, and I believe there should be a couple of photos coming around. Scouts in the district have also provided community service by maintaining the campus garden at Oak Ridge Elementary School and, more recently, constructing a lending library at Lamar Elementary. As with most organizations and events, COVID has had an impact on scouting, with the recent cancellation of many of our in-person meetings, activities, and events, including the summer camp at the new Camp Strait. Like most other organizations, scouting has continued to function in a virtual world. Our recruiting for Cub Scouts in particular has transitioned into a texted join format. Our request for you tonight is to support our organization as we move forward during these very challenging times. Thank you for your support.
Outstanding. Ms., Ms. Carla, did you have something?
Uh, no, I didn't have anything prepared, but thank you so much for having us today, and because of our redistricting, we are now able to serve all of Conroe I S D in one district. So, I look forward to forming whatever partnerships and relationships we can with each of the campuses in Conroe I S D to serve them as best as we can. Thank you so much.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Cheryl Desler.
Good evening, Dr. Knoll, President Williams, and the rest of the school board. I'm here tonight representing myself and as a teaching professional in C I S D, and I represent my fellow teachers who have contacted me since Sunday night. I've had no less than ten contacts. They're concerned about the new job description that has been sent out to us, and that they're expected to sign by Friday. And we just have a lot of questions. We feel that there was new terminology added. We were told originally that the verbiage was just to include online teaching, but then there are things like plan, prepare, implement, evaluate lessons and activities during standard work hours of the campus, as well as prolong in irregular hours, be able to communicate with students, parents, campus, and district personnel during standard work hours, as well as prolong or irregular work hours, exposure to biological hazard. These are things that we know were going to happen, and we feel like we are already doing our best to implement all the things that have been asked of us this school year. We were teaching online in, as, in March of 2020, when COVID started. We feel like that could have been added to our contract in May of 2020 of this school year. We know that our job has changed. We know that we have done our best to do all the things that are asked of us. What our question is, so why are we being asked after ten weeks into this school year to sign a new job description? We feel frustrated, we feel demeaned, and we've just been given so much this entire time that we just want to feel a little appreciated and not more stressed out about the job that we're being asked to do. It's not that we don't want to do it, we're doing it to the very best of our ability. These children are number one in our lives, and this district is also important to us. I'd just thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Bercher.
Good evening. I am a parent of a fourth grader and a sixth grader in your district. I have a father who's going to pass away soon, is in hospice care in our home, and so allowing my children to go to in-person school and then come back into our home was gonna be remarkably difficult. And I am so thankful for the virtual education that my children receive. I thank you so much. I had to change, and my wife had to change our work to be from our home, which took up both of our computers so that we could earn a living to continue to pay all the bills that are coming our way during this time. I didn't know what we were gonna do with, for my children. I called the elementary school where my daughter goes and the middle school, and within two days, each had a laptop to, to participate online. The instruction online has been remarkable. It has been outstanding. The things that my children have learned from day one have been excellent, and I am so appreciative that, as you spoke about that harvest earlier, my children are experiencing the harvest of planning that went for a long time, to be prepared with computers, good, good and strong teachers, to be able to stand in this gap for my children, and I could not appreciate it more. I have two concerns to raise, but please limit my concerns to my earlier comment. We have had eleven times, eleven emails, things between my, the teachers of both of my children over this time, where they have been giving, given an assignment, a test or a quiz on Canvas. They performed well on that test and chose correct answers that were marked incorrect in the Canvas system, confusing them, making them wonder why did I get this wrong? So, I have, I make them email their teachers. The teachers are always remarkably responsive. The teachers always take the Canvas test back into the entire classroom in the online setting, and they discuss the error that's been involved in that. But in my opinion, eleven times in a nine-week period, to have that error seemed a little strong, right? Additionally, I'm concerned, my children, my son had to transition in the second nine weeks to a new grouping of teachers, who I'm sure are going to be just as excellent as the others. But between the time this new, from the start of this new six weeks till now, he's received less than an hour of instruction. I don't know what that transition was about, but it's been very minimal. And now, looking at the schedule that the teachers have for him moving forward, it's limited to instruction at an hour and a half a day in total between all three teachers. And we had experienced a great deal more of instruction in that first nine weeks, and I'm just hoping that that will continue. Anyway, thank you so much for all of what you've done for many years to bring Conroe I S D to be able to serve students like mine, and we're just very thankful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Stephen Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Williams, Dr. Knoll, thank you for this opportunity. I don't know any of you, so, as well as you probably don't know me, but that's okay. My name's Stephen Johnson, I have a daughter that attends Pete Junior High, who's thirteen. Let me get this right. So, I'm coming to you this evening to address a few points and concerns. I'm coming to you as a parent, I'm coming to you as a taxpayer of Conroe I S D, and I'm also coming to you as an American patriot, okay? I understand the dilemma that all of you have been put in with this COVID crisis, and I don't minimize the tough decisions that you've had to make and the far government overreach that we've seen in our communities locally and nationally. I know you've got everything from T E A, U I L, F D A, County Health Department, federal government, as well as Governor Abbott himself imposing things on this district, and I know you've got to make some tough decisions. However, if we're gonna call ourselves an independent school district, I feel like there needs to be more discretion for you guys. What do I mean by that? I hate unfunded mandates as much as you do, as a taxpayer, as well as you guys as the school board. All right, more specifically, I want to bring it down to a local level. Governments, the governor's order says no masks required for ages under ten. Why is the school districts in Conroe allowing or mandating kids pre-K through nine years old to wear masks? That's a question, right? Not only have we not had zero fatalities ages zero to twenty in Montgomery County, but the facts are clear. This is, this is unconstitutional, and it's, it's not appropriate for a kindergartner to be wearing a mask. Why do I say that? Because I feel like the kids are being indoctrinated. I see them walking around in the park by themselves with masks on, riding their bikes in my neighborhood with masks on. The madness has to stop somewhere, and it starts with you as the elected leaders of the school board, okay? I see kid, further, the idea of mask requirement to attend face-to-face instruction versus online is very, is both unconstitutional, and it's separate and unequal. You know as well as I do, kids being face-to-face with their teachers is the best way they learn, period, right? So, the idea of, we have an alternative, we'll make a recommendation, we'll have a separate, you know, virtual learning is unacceptable. I can have as much respect for any of these teachers that have come up here and implored you with the dilemmas that they're in, because having to do my daughter's school virtually was difficult. Managing work as a single parent, having to teach her school, trust me, corporal punishment came back into school, right? In prayer. So, I would, I would cite several things, right? So, you know, I could sit here and quote CDC, NIH, FDA, OSHA studies that back up what I'm saying, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do that. We have a very limited time here, and I think every one of you are educated, and you know what we're dealing with here, right? However, I would ask you, school board members, you can see the hypocrisy in this, right? You've probably all seen Umble I S D School Board meeting where Lori Twomey, you know, questioned the data. I hope you've seen that video. If you haven't, please go watch it, right? It starts with you guys as the school board, and I hope that you'll make the tough decisions appropriately. Again, thank you for your time. I'll end with this quote from Teddy Roosevelt. All right, in any moment of decision, the best thing we can do is the right thing. The next best thing is the worst thing. The worst thing is to do nothing. I implore you, as a resident and as a father of a kid in this school district, take the masks off these kids. Let them go back to normal. Not a new normal, normal. That's my request. Thank you.
How, how do we get ahold of you?
We have a.
You have a contact info?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Coughlin. All right, item four, consent agenda. Gentlemen, I've received no request or agreement with the consent agenda.
I'm with the adoption of.
I second the motion.
I have a motion that's been properly seconded. Any discussion? Here and now, in all the favor. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we're gonna take a recess for public comment. I'm sorry, public, uh, here.
Yes, thank you. So, we will continue moving forward with the meeting at this time. We'll ask Dr. Chris Hines to come forward. We will hold our public hearing to consider whether the district should revise and/or renew its local innovation plan to maintain our status as a district of innovation. At the conclusion of Dr. Hines's presentation, there'll be an opportunity for public comment on this item.
Thank you, President Williams, members of the Board, Dr. Knoll, members of our audience tonight. I'd like to briefly take a moment to kind of share a little bit of information about the District of Innovation process and our request in a short period of time to ask our Board to approve a, approve our committee to put together a plan. So, the Eighty-Fourth Legislature passed House Bill eighteen forty-two, which created an option for districts of innovation, and this was in two thousand and fifteen. And this District of Innovation provides an opportunity to design an innovation plan according to the needs and resources of our district. It maximizes local control, it increases local flexibility, it provides a local option other than the formal waiver system, which we still use. It must be renewed every five years, and it so happens that we are now at the end of our five-year period, and it is time to renew again. Approval does require two-thirds of members of our Board to approve. Our current plan does expire in January, and currently, our current plan only allows for really one thing, a flexible start date, which. So we've been starting earlier than that under our District of Innovation plan. It could contain several waivers. Tonight, we will ask our board to approve the district-level and planning and decision-making committee, which is made up of teachers, parents, community members, and administrators as the District of Innovation committee. We're also asking our board to approve a resolution to allow us to do this process. And if approved, this committee will develop a plan. It will place the plan on the district's website for 30 days, and during that time, we will also receive feedback on that plan. The plan will be, once we develop a plan, we would bring it to the school board for approval in December. If approved, this plan will be in place for five years. We always get the question, can you change the plan once you approve it? And the answer is we can, but it restarts the entire process over again. You know, another question I've had is, based on our current plan, are we planning on changing anything? And the one thing that has come up over the last five years that's been requested has been, you know, several districts in our area have a waiver for the, in the area of CTE certifications, which is specifically related to hard-to-fill positions in the manufacturing areas such as welding, collision and repair, automotive technology, health science, and computer science. So we know several districts take advantage of this. This will probably be discussed. So this is our draft timeline. Tonight, we have a public hearing. We will have a committee appointed. There will be a resolution adopted that allows us to begin this process. I also always want to clarify that just because if we do become a district of innovation, it doesn't obligate us to follow any of these things that we seek waivers from. So in other words, we could say we can start before the 4th Monday in August, but we don't have to. The board can adopt a calendar that starts on the 4th Monday in August. After this, tomorrow, we have our district-level planning and decision-making committee that will develop and approve a plan, and this plan will go onto the website for 30 days. We'll take feedback. On November the 18th, we'll have another meeting to review feedback. We will then come back on December 2nd. That'll be after 30 days to finalize whatever it is we want to recommend to the board. We will bring that forward to the board on December the 15th. So that's the basic timeline of this process. And so turn it back to you, Dr. Knoll.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hines, for the presentation. Are there any comments on Dr. Hines's presentation? Okay, seeing done, that will conclude our public hearing, or I'm sorry. Karen, did you want to speak? I don't, I don't want to cut you short there.
It's pretty short. It did.
Thank you, short notice. So I do want to say thank you for bringing this to our attention, and we will be going through this, and I will be running this with our TSTA members, TSTA Conro members. And I just want to share again, as you consider this new component to the DOI, please, please keep in mind that we want to maintain the high quality of our teachers that we have hired, and we want to please ensure that when this, when you guys are discussing this and talking about it, that, that we keep that in mind, okay? And that we're not undermining teachers when we're looking for these other professionals that would be CTE certified. Please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, that will conclude our public hearing.
All right. So we're back in session, 6:52 PM. So we're on item 5B. Or do we stay with four?
Yes, yes, sir. 5B. And we'll go to Dr. Hines once again, these next two items, just to keep us moving through this District of Innovation process.
Tonight, we ask that the Board of Trustees designate the district-level planning and decision-making committee as the District of Innovation Plan Committee. It's just to go back a little bit, we used the same committee in 2015, and so we're going to ask that you're going to approve a resolution next, but when we started this and did the original designation, the Board of Trustees appointed our district-level planning and decision-making committee as the committee that is tasked with developing the local innovation plan. Because they have experience with this, we're asking that you would designate this committee again.
I'll move.
We have a motion.
I second the motion.
Properly seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Sanders.
It's just kind of an administrative or governance question. So the board originally in 2015, that did the resolution for the District of Innovation, appointed at that time the district-level planning committee as the DOI committee.
Yes, sir.
Is there something that says we have to, we have to reset the committee? I mean, does not that, if we're not changing it, why aren't we having to revote on it again?
It expires after five years.
Well, the DOI plan does, but our designation of the committee.
Correct.
Being responsible for the DOI, does that change?
Yeah, anytime you change the plan, the man, the statute says you have to go through the entire process again. So when it's expired.
So just erase the board and start over.
Correct. Officially bless it again.
I'm not against any of it. I just want to understand the governance of why we're having to come back and do that again, since we've already done it once. Unless we're making it change.
Either if it expires, or even if we wanted to make any change to it at any point, we, it triggers the entire process, and part of the process is your approval of the committee and then your approval of a resolution to move forward. It's just.
I got you. Okay. Thank you. You answered my question. That's all I need to know.
Honestly, too, over time, there might be different board members, and so for them, they.
Sure. Yeah. No, I get it, but it still, it may be different members even of the district-level planning committee, but it's still the same group.
Indeed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a quick comment as well. I just wanted to convey some confidence in the teachers as well, that we were able to have a board workshop on this very thing, and a lot of the things that were kind of brought up, we did discuss. We wanted to make sure that the teachers were protected. We all felt the same way, that we weren't going to just try to do things to chase a certain area. And so I have nothing but all the confidence in the, in this program that we'll be able to address those things.
Thank you.
Motion has been properly seconded. Discussion done. Any, well, all in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Item C, Consider Adoption Resolution to Renew the District's District of Innovation Designation.
Thank you. As a follow-up to that, again, we're asking you to approve the resolution that authorizes the district to begin this process in renewing the designation as a District of Innovation.
I move we adopt the resolution to renew the district's District of Innovation.
Second.
Designation.
Motion and second. Any discussion, gentlemen? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Hines.
Thank you.
And team. Items six, Teaching and Learning, Receive Information Regarding the Instructional Materials Selection Process.
All right. Dr. Adi, shall I say to Upshaw?
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. So the Department of Teaching and Learning comes to you tonight with an information item regarding the instructional material selection process. This school year, the state is adopting selected materials for Spanish and English for our pre-kindergarten students. In accordance to our board policy, EFA, instructional materials and instructional resources, the district will form a committee to evaluate the quality of the instructional materials and make a recommendation to the board regarding their selection. Each campus that has a pre-kindergarten program will have only, or have one member on the committee, along with the district-level committee that will help those teachers through the process. Committee members are not only responsible for making a recommendation to the board, they're also responsible for receiving these materials at their campus, to disseminating the information, and informing the other campus teachers for pre-kindergartners of the survey and of the quality of the material. All teachers who will use the instructional materials will be available to review the material and submit evaluations and comments to the committee for consideration. Other activities that we do in the district for this process is that we have a publisher showcase of our top publishers from the committee surveys, and they get to go a little bit more in-depth with the material. And then also, our community has an opportunity to be able to respond and see the materials, and we offer this for the dates listed in your item here at our instructional warehouse off of God's Dome. So we just wanted to share this with you for this evening, and we will come back later in March with a recommendation for you to approve for us to purchase these materials. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Upshaw? Dr. Upshaw? Anybody? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item seven, Planning and Construction, Consider Approval of G Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for a New Teacher Training Center at Wood Forest Stadium Project, and Authorize the Battalion to Negotiate and Execute the Construction Manager at Risk Contract Documents.
All right, Mr. Foster.
All right. Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. It's my pleasure to bring forward for your consideration and approval a guaranteed maximum price for a new teacher training center, which we've got located on the property that holds Wood Forest Stadium and our district naterium. So in June, our board of directors, you selected Brookstone to be our construction manager at risk for this project. Since then, Brookstone, PBK, our design firm, and our Conro ISD administration have been working together to develop the scope and the plans for this project, and we are pleased to present a guaranteed maximum price of $15,552,314, and at this time, we're requesting your approval.
I have a motion.
I second the motion.
Properly seconded by Mr. Sanders. Any discussion?
I have a.
Go ahead, Mr. Sanders.
So scope of work, in the board book, it was, I just read the line items, so it was difficult. Based on the renderings that we had copies of, were there any major changes or differences or anything like that?
No, there haven't been at this point. I mean, we are continuing to develop plans a little bit, but the overall scope of the work, the building remains about 49,000, almost 50,000 square feet, two stories.
Okay.
Lots of multi-use, multipurpose ballroom space that can be made smaller.
Right. Configured for different sizes, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Where do we agree to put this thing?
It's going to be on the north end of the football field, so basically just opposite of the naterium.
Where the scoreboard.
Behind, where the scoreboard.
That was one of two options. That was the.
Yes, that's the one that ended up making the most sense.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea. We're not having to pay for parking. We've already had parking there. I mean, when you talk about trying to be efficient with your dollars, this is about as efficient of a building as we'll have access to. It's, I believe it's more centrally located for the district our size, and so every teacher should have, I believe, an easier access up here to that. I hate teachers having to travel up and down 45, as congested as it can be, and so I'm really proud that we're going to be able to do this.
Outstanding. All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Foster. Item B, Receive Capital Improvement Update. Mr. Foster.
All right. At this time, I would like to bring you up to speed on our capital improvements we have underway throughout the district. I'm going to start you with Hope Elementary School. It's our newest elementary school out in the Granger Lane area, in the Canyon Creek feeder zone. So it is roughly half-done. It's scheduled to open in August of 2021. So it is on schedule, and we've been talking over the last several months about drying that building in. So you can see from this picture, the roof is about three-quarters done. The exterior walls are also about three-quarters done. So by the end of December, we will be in a dry environment with air conditioners running on that site. So overhead for this picture, you can see the Granger Pines development, developing the Phase One development to the top right of the screen. It's filling in nicely, so, much so, that the developer has activated Phase Two, which is the top left of the screen. You can see the clearing and infrastructure is done there as well, so the neighborhood is growing around the school. Now, as we move around the school, this is a picture of the front door. So you can see, like I said, the exterior machinery work is rapidly coming to completion as we dry in that building. And then around the backside, you can see the finished stone work beginning as we stack the bricks and stone to make that finish look happen. Like I said, that building is on schedule, and it's scheduled to open in August of 2021. So at Runyon Elementary School, we've got a PE classroom addition, which is actually, there's several things going on at Runyon Elementary to facilitate that PE classroom addition. I'm going to start with our pre-K addition, so there's classrooms for the pre-K section of that school. So you can see here, it is in a dry condition. So they're doing the exterior machinery work there, and we anticipate using the pre-K classrooms when the children return from the winter break. Moving on to the PE classroom addition portion of that, so you see the larger building is the gymnasium area, and then the shorter building would be the new library area for that campus. Again, these are approaching the dry condition very rapidly, and we do anticipate using both of those spaces when they return from the winter break. So once they get these spaces open, then we'll work on the spaces we're displacing inside the building. So we're returning their existing library back to classroom space, reconfiguring their current pre-K for some other classrooms, and relocating that stuff throughout the building. So it is on schedule, and like I said, the major portions, we anticipate using when they return from the winter break. So at York Junior High, where we've got a building addition project that is intended to increase the overall capacity at York Junior High School, that project is scheduled to open in August of 2021. So you can see from the top side of the picture, the slab and steel structure is going on. This picture is actually a couple of weeks old, so the slab is nearly complete at this point, as I'm speaking tonight, and the structure is going up as they pour the concrete. Like I said, it is on schedule, scheduled to open in August of 2021. At the Woodlands College Park High School, we've got a classroom addition there that will help us reduce our reliance on portable buildings at that campus. This is one where we've gotten a commitment from the contractor to bring this building to our use in August of 2021 as well. As you can see, the building slab and structure are in place, and they're working on decking in the floors and the second floor and roof deck as we speak. So it is currently on schedule for the August 21 turnover. At the Woodlands High School, which again is another building addition to help us reduce our reliance on portable buildings at this campus, this is a three-story building addition. Slab and structure are in place. The floor decks are going in now. They're placing the second floor concrete deck, I believe, this week. And then moving on to the third floor, it is scheduled for an August of 21 turnover for us to use when the students return from the summer break as well, and I'm happy to report it is on schedule. In our safety and security project for 2020, this is a district-wide effort, so this is an interior shot of the secure, behind the secure vestibule at McCullough Junior High. So we've been working on the finer details, most of the above ceilings. So this month, we're wrapping up the details on the first responder radio systems for the campuses we touched, and the district level, our internal radio system antennas. They're wrapping those up this week, or this month, rather, and then we'll do some financial closeout with the contractor. We'll bid the 2021 project early in the spring semester, and then bring that to you for approval for the next installment of this district-wide effort, and that is our update.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Outstanding job, as always. All right, item eight. Before we get to item eight, we're going to recess again for public hearing. Dr. Knoll.
Thank you, President Williams. Once again, we will now move into a public hearing. We'll follow the same pattern as we did before. This will be a public hearing on the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. Mrs. Karen Garza will present the Conro ISD status in our first report, and following her presentation, there'll be an opportunity for public comment on this particular item as well. Mrs. Garza.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Knoll, and community members. It is my pleasure this evening to present the School Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas Annual Financial Report, also known as the FIRST Report. The state's school financial accountability rating system, known as the FIRST Report, ensures that Texas public schools are held accountable for their financial management practices. The system is designed to encourage Texas public schools to better manage their financial resources and to provide the maximum allocation possible for direct instructional purposes. The data used in the report that you will see tonight is based upon staff and student data for the 2018-19 school year and budgetary and actual financial data for fiscal year ended August 31, 2019. The district was rated on 15 separate performance indicators. Indicators one through five are pass/fail. Indicators six through 15 are worth 10 points each. These are the indicator, or the scores that we can receive on the FIRST Report, and A being a superior rating of 90 to 100 points, all the way through F, a substandard achievement. We are pleased to announce this evening that Conro ISD has received an A or a superior rating, scoring a possible 98 out of 100 points. The superior rating is the state's highest, demonstrating the quality of Conro ISD's financial management and reporting systems. Now I will take you through each of the 15 indicators. Indicator one was the annual financial report, or the AFRA, and data submitted to TEA within 30 days of the January 28 deadline. Conro ISD's information was submitted on January 22, 2020. Indicator two A, was there an unmodified opinion in the AFRA on the financial statements as a whole? Yes, Conro ISD received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance you can receive from an external auditor. Indicator two, A, was there an unmodified opinion in the AFRA on the financial statements as a whole? Yes, Conroe ISD received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance you can receive from an external auditor. Indicator two, B, did the external independent auditor report that the AFRA was free of any instances of material weaknesses? Yes, Conroe ISD received a clean audit. Indicator three, was the district in compliance with payment terms of all debt agreements at fiscal year end? Yes, we were in compliance with all payment terms. Number four, did the district make timely payments to the teacher retirement system, the Texas Workforce Commission, the IRS, and other governmental agencies? Yes. Indicator five, once again, this indicator was not scored this year as a result of GAZB 75 and the net pension liability. TEA is looking to replace this indicator. They have not made a final determination as to what that will look like yet, but we do anticipate a change with indicator five. Indicator number six, was the number of days cash on hand and current investments in the general fund sufficient to cover operating expenditures? Yes, Conroe ISD had 119 days cash on hand. We'd received a 10 on this indicator. Indicator seven, was the measure of current assets to current liabilities ratio for the district sufficient to cover short-term debt? Conroe ISD's ratio was 2.53. We received an eight out of 10 possible points on this indicator. And just a note on this indicator, as you are aware, the district has invested $50 million of its unassigned fund balance with TCG Investment Advisors, and as a result of that, a big portion of that money has been moved from current assets into long-term assets due to the ladder that we have with TCG. That was a very strategic decision made with your guidance as a board to allow us to earn some additional interest revenue, and that is why we received an eight on this indicator. A 2.53 ratio is still a very strong ratio. Indicator number eight, was the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets for the district sufficient to support long-term solvency? If the district's change in membership over the last five years was greater than 7% or more, the district automatically passes this indicator. Our membership increased by 11.4% over the last five years preceding this report, so we did receive a 10 on this indicator. Indicator nine, did the district's general fund revenues exceed expenditures? Yes, we received a 10 on this indicator. Number 10, was the debt service ratio sufficient to meet the required debt service? Yes, Conroe's ratio was 1.38. We received a 10 on this indicator as well. Number 11, was the district's administrative cost ratio equal to or less than the threshold? The state law, and TEA set a budget on, or a cap on the amount that Texas schools can spend on administration. Their cap is .0855. Conroe ISD's ratio is less than half of that, at .0416. We received a 10 on this indicator. Number 12, did the district not have a 15% decline in the student-to-staff ratio over the last three years? If student enrollment did not decrease, we automatically passed this indicator. Conroe ISD's enrollment increased by 3,073 students from fiscal year 17 through the end of 19, so we received a 10 on this indicator. Number 13, did the comparison of PIMs data to like information in the AFRA result in an aggregate variance of less than 3%? Conroe ISD had zero variances. We received a 10 on this indicator. Did the external independent auditor indicate that the AFRA was free of any instances of material noncompliance for grants, contracts, and laws related to local, state, or federal funds? We received a clean audit, therefore received a 10 on this indicator. And lastly, indicator 15, did the school district not receive an adjusted repayment scheduled for more than one fiscal year for an overallocation of FSP funding? The district is in good financial standing. We received a 10 on this indicator. This slide here just represents how Conroe ISD scores compared to our peer districts in the area. And the First Report, along with the additional required disclosures that include the superintendent's contract and the first, school first annual financial report, can be located on the district's transparency website at the link below.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. At this time, we will accept any public comment regarding our First Report. Okay, not seeing any. That will conclude our public hearing. Mr. President.
Thank you. Outstanding job, Ms. Garza, as well as Mr. Rice and team. You guys make it easy for us to sit up here and confidently know that the district has been extremely well managed and run from a financial standpoint. So thank you, guys, for all the hard work that you guys do. Thank you for relieving that burden for us, sitting up here and making sure that our finances are being attended to correctly. Thank you, guys. All right, let's go. We call a meeting back into session, 12, 7:12 is the time. Let's go with item nine. Are we at nine?
Eight B.
Eight B. Thanks for keeping me on track. Consider award RFP 20-08-06, new and used vehicles.
All right, Mr. Reeves.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. Tonight, we are recommending that the Board Award RFP number 20-08-06, new and used vehicles to the attached vendors, for an estimated annual expenditure of $500,000. Requests for proposals pertaining to the purchase of new and used vehicles for the district were emailed to our registered vendors through the electronic e-bidding system, also advertised on the Conroe ISD purchasing website and in the courier. Unit pricing was requested for new white fleet vehicles and a catalog discount to quote used vehicles through October of next year, 2021. We had five vendors submit a bid response. Proposals were evaluated by our maintenance department, transportation department, technology department, and the CISD's police department, and reviewed by the purchasing department. Funds for the purchase of new vehicles are provided in the CISD general fund. Best value offers are recommended for award, and at this time, we request your approval.
I move approval as presented.
Second. Motion properly second. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Don't we have a check we can put towards that?
Got a down payment over here.
All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Let's go ahead with item C, consider award RFP 20-08-07, auto fleet parts.
Once again, we recommend that the Board consider awarding RFP number 20-08-07 for auto fleet parts to the vendors listed for an estimated annual expenditure of $1.2 million. The requests for proposals pertaining to auto fleet parts for the district were emailed to registered vendors through our electronic e-bidding system, advertised on the Conroe ISD purchasing website and in the courier. Vendors were asked to provide a market basket discount for the purchase of various auto parts and fluids. Discounts are to be effective for one year through October 2021, automatically renewing annually for two additional one-year terms through October of 2023. We had 25 vendors submit a response. Proposals were evaluated by the transportation and maintenance departments and reviewed by the purchasing department. These funds are provided in the general fund. Best offer, value offers are recommended, and at this time, we request your approval.
So move.
Second.
Motion properly second. Any discussion, gentlemen? All in favor? Motion passes. Mr. Reeves, once again, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 8E, receive, item 8D, receive final results refunding and new money bond series 2028.
All right, Mr. Rice.
Yes, good evening, President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure to introduce our financial advisor, Mr. John Robuck with BOK Financial Services. I know y'all have seen him many times here this evening. And this evening, Mr. Robuck will share, will share the outstanding final results from our latest bond sale transaction, the refunding and new money bond series 2028.
You mean brag?
He can only come if he saves the taxpayers some money.
What are you going to do when the interest rates go up?
I did make note that the only item Darren presented tonight is this item. It's so great. He's sort of moved away now. He only wants to.
Are you going to retire when the interest rates go up?
I'm going to have to. You're not going to let me work here anymore, right? I was going to let Mr. Rice give the presentation, but I'm happy to give it. Great news. President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Knoll, thank you for having me tonight. And. Thank you, Mr. Rice. On the screen, there is a presentation, and I believe, click, just click right here. This is the final results of the sale of the bonds that took place on October 6. Before I get to the results, I'd like to go through the current bond market. We are just off of all-time lows, about 22, 23 basis points off all-time lows in the bond market. We have seen the volatility over the last couple of weeks. In fact, the day of the sale, we had some volume because other issuers wanted to issue, just like the district did, ahead of the election, because the unknown of what's going to happen after the election with interest rates and the stock market. So there's been a lot of volume in the market. Investors are only coming in for really good value and high-rated issuers, which obviously the district is. And we received a lot of interest, a lot of the back end. The middle of the curve was not real strong, but we got it, we got it accomplished and sold. And as a result, we were able to refund the two series of bonds that we presented to you in July, totaling 199,630 in bonds, for interest cost savings. And the savings here is on page three, there in the yellow, we were able to save over $50 million in savings, or $3,575,000 a year for 14 years. And we did that by issuing $163,235 million in bonds, and 50, the interest cost on that was about $56 million for the refunding portion. Now, the new money portion, we issued $165,090,000 in bonds, and generated proceeds of $189 million for projects. And we were able to sell that, about $13 million interest cost, total interest cost, less than we presented in July, at over $38 million, less than we presented the bond program we went out to voters back in 20, 2019. Gosh, time flies. The next page is the final sources of funds. Again, we sold on the refunding portion, we sold $163 million in bonds. Investors paid a premium of roughly $38 million, and less expenses generated proceeds of $204 million for an escrow deposit to refund those bonds. We were able to sell the refunding portion at an all-costed rate of a 1.285%. To put that in context, we refunded the refunding bonds that had outstanding rate of a 4.478, so we're able to reduce the interest rate on those bonds by about 3.2%. And that's where we get the savings of $50 million. Net present.
What was that savings again?
$50 million, $67,435. I got, it's over $50 million.
Do you need a T-ball holder up there?
Well, I was asked to get $50 million. And then the day of the sale, Aaron asked me for 60. I can't, I can't work that kind of magic.
You never want to leave something on the table.
Exactly right. You had to ask. But that's a present value savings of 22.385%. And not to speak too much, but to kind of put that in context, we used to come to you guys and give a refunding presentation, it generates 3% PV savings. We'd say it's a good deal. 5% was a great deal.
Wow.
22.3.
I heard of it.
Yeah, that's, I'm not sure what you called that. That's awesome. For the new money portion, again, we sold $165 million, generated $189 million in proceeds, and on the 25-year debt that we issued, the all cost was a 2.478%. And in the bond program, we estimated 4%. So we're very happy with the results. On the last page of the presentations, the scheduled events, we sold the bonds on October 6, which is the second from the bottom there, and then we're going to close on November 17. And at that point, the district will receive the funds for the projects of $189 million. I'll be happy to answer any questions on the sale. Again, we are very pleased with the results. Again, it's so nice to work with a, the school just got such a high credit rating, and it's easy for the underwriters to sell these bonds.
Mr. Robuck, I know, too, you didn't go that morning out to the market immediately because rates actually kind of ticked up a little bit that morning.
They did.
And you wisely, with Mr. Rice, chose to wait a couple of hours, and those couple of hours, I think, tipped the scale quite a bit. It was pretty integral, and we appreciate your financial advice on that because that could have cost us several million dollars or cost our taxpayers quite a bit, and so we appreciate that as well. I think that's an important point to make.
We thought about delaying it by a couple of days, too, and I'm glad we didn't.
Right, no, I think you did do it, yeah.
Because the next day was a little tougher market.
Right.
So very fortunate that we did that.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
$22 million, present value. I'm sorry.
No savings.
50.
50.
50 million savings.
His present value, uh.
Present value savings at 22%.
22%.
22%.
Yeah.
Man, that's awesome.
That's great.
And the savings on the, just, just to, on the, on the new money portion, the savings over what we anticipated when we took the bond to the voters was how much?
Over $38 million.
So in total, this is an $88 million. Yeah, awesome.
That's right. That's how we keep the.
Let's see on that for a while.
Indeed.
Outstanding job.
If anybody's.
From the top, do it again.
Anymore. Thanks, y'all. Appreciate it, Mr. Robuck.
All right, let's go ahead. Item 8E, do we receive financial report?
No, we need to get that. Mrs. Garza will be back.
Mrs. Garza.
All right, he did 88 million. You got 90 million.
I might want to be nearly as excited.
Oh, all right, all right. We had a big check to start us off, and then 88 million. I didn't know if you were going to top it or.
This will be a letdown. I have.
She's going to tell us our self-insurance.
Yeah, right, our insurance will be the wrong way. We know how we're going to spend the money.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure this evening to present the financial statements for the month ended September 30. First statement is our balance sheet. The balance sheet shows the district's assets and liabilities. We have total assets in the general fund as of 9:30 of $622.1 million, total liabilities of $393 million. Taking a closer look at our cash and investments in the general fund, we have $149.9 million in the pools, $14.8 million of short-term investments, longer-term investments with TCG, $52.4 million, or total cash and investments in the general fund of $229.4 million. This is our income statement. The income statement shows the district's revenues and expenditures. Our total revenues year-to-date are $58.8 million, total expense of $4.8 million. So 2019 bond referendum update, we have sold, as of September 30, before Mr. Robuck's sale, $122.5 million. We will update that information next month to reflect the sale. We have encumbered to date $104.1 million, leaving estimated to complete of $532.4 million. Self-funded insurance update, $4.4 million in revenue for the month, $4,520,000 in expenses, so we did come out positive for the month of $384,000. Participation at our wellness centers for the month of September was 373. Our investments as of September 30, our power value is $384 million. Our pools are yielding .221. Our Wood Forest Bank investments are yielding .19. Our shorter-term investments have a WHAM of 66, yielding 1.327. Our longer-term investments with TCG have a WHAM of 440 days, yielding 1.59. And our combined portfolio yielding .437 with a WHAM of 62 days, compared to our benchmark in 90-day T-bill, yielding .105.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. Any questions? All right, item nine, executive session. I didn't have anything.
We can move to item 11, legal.
Remove to item 11. Item 11. All right, Board of Trustees, continuing education announcement. Under the State Board of Education rule, completing required continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member. As President of Conroe Independent School District Board of Trustees, I am required to announce the name of each member who, as a member, as of that member's anniversary of election or appointment to the board, has, one, completed the required continuing education, two, exceeded the required continuing education, and who is deficient in meeting the required continuing education. I am pleased to announce that all members of the Conroe Independent Board of Trustees